Okay, evening, everybody. Seeing that we have 6 o'clock, I would like to open this meeting with a roll call vote. John Burke, here.
Uh, Will Sankewitz, here.
Bob Clark, here.
Jeffrey Blum, here.
Courtney Brightman, here.
Crystal A, here.
Carolina Hernandez, here.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to accept the motion for the group to go into executive session with return to open session for reason number two, to discuss strategy with negotiations of non-union personnel.
Don't move. Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, very sorry, okay. A roll call vote, please. Burke, aye.
Sankewitz, aye.
Bob Clark.
Blum, aye.
Brightman, aye.
In, aye.
Hernandez, aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We will return.
Be right back.
To open the public meeting and go into executive session, we are returning to open session. In addition to the committee, Jack Higgins is joining us at the table. Other than Lakeham, is anybody recording the meeting? Thank you. Seeing none, I'll ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, infinite, endless.
I have a question. Since Renee's not here, who's taking notes?
She's gonna watch it afterwards.
Yeah, Lakeham, okay. All right, I will, uh, I'll entertain a motion to accept meeting minutes from June 12th.
Don't move. Second.
I have a meeting in a second. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor, proceed by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained?
Abstained.
One abstained, Ms. Blum. Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes from June 17th.
Don't move. Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, motion passes. All right, FY 24-25 budget update.
Sure, so this week I've been able to work, begin working in the business office. We're closing out FY 24, which is a combination of a number of things, including review of our end-of-year revenues, end-of-year payroll, and summer encumbrances, cutting our end-of-year POs, and then what we're starting to look at is reviewing FY 22 and FY 23 end-of-years as templates to identify elements of importance for '24. We'll be reviewing end-of-year requirements set forth by DLS in their annual June letter, which we completed the review, and just make sure we get those bullet points as we go through, which is mostly for that is relative to E&amp;D, balance sheets, and regional transportation.
Outstanding. Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Higgins? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
So, the one thing, yeah, through the chair, the one thing we did just discuss is we are gonna get a meeting on the calendar in July. And we'll talk through some dates for you, and we wanna kind of hold that time, just in case there are any updates for us, because we've heard that this budget has a deficit. We've heard that there's $1.8 million sitting in the budget, right? So, as we work to kind of, as you work and your team, which we appreciate, work through this, we will get some time on the calendar in July, just to check in and get some updates there, but we'll float you some dates, and we wanted to make sure you had a runway to be able to dive in and do the work that you need to do.
Sure.
So, we'll get your feedback there. But that's the only thing for me. We appreciate it.
Appreciate that, thank you. All right. We had spoken last meeting about entering into a contract negotiation with Kelly Steele for the Director of Student Services. We have a agreeable contract of both parties. I'd like to, I'd like to vote that in an open session.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. I'll do a roll call vote for the approval of this contract for Kelly Steele. Burke, aye.
Blum, aye.
Bob Clark, aye. Sankewitz, aye.
Brightman, aye.
In, aye.
Hernandez, aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay. Next on our business is the land of 92 Howland Road. We've spoken to it in a couple of meetings now. The seller has, has offered $5,000 to the district as a consideration in exchange for the district's execution and recording of a release of the right of first refusal and the right of way impacting the seller's property, which is at 92 Howland Road, Howland Road in Lakeville. I will entertain a motion to accept, to accept the seller's offer.
Don't move. Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. I will do a roll call vote for this as well. Burke, aye.
Blum, aye.
Bob Clark, aye. Sankewitz, aye.
Brightman, aye.
In, aye.
Hernandez, aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you to the seller, and I wish him the best of luck on his property. Thank you.
You've been a great neighbor. We appreciate you as well.
Thank you. Okay, we're at a point of public participation. We will hold public participation in accordance with our policies. We'll allow each speaker a maximum of about three minutes, during which time to speak about topics within the scope and responsibility of the committee. Is anyone here tonight for public participation?
Hi. Parker French, Freetown Finance. A couple of things before I really get into it. Number one, Jeff Petty from Freetown has asked at least over three meetings to get a copy of the superintendent's evaluation, and was completely ignored. Last meeting, Lakeville last, and gee, the next day they got it. What's wrong with Freetown? Why is Freetown being hurt? And then Carlos, a man, asked and got a copy of that evaluation within five to 10 minutes. So, I have a problem that I have to publicly put out there. Freetown is half of your district. Stop it, you guys. All right, now, what I just passed out was the DESI guidelines on writing an evaluation for superintendent. It's five steps. First of all, it says that formative evaluation should be done mid-year.
Point of order, I don't have that.
I copied it.
Yeah, okay. Could you send one down to Jen too, as well?
One's gotta go to Jen. Yeah, Jen needs a copy as well. I didn't pass them. Oh, I'm sorry. My fault.
Okay. So, DESI suggests evaluation should be done each year with a formative evaluation mid-year.
Yep.
Unless, with agreement of the school committee, with an experienced superintendent, you can do a value, you can do formative after one year and summative after two. Ms. Strauss is not an experienced superintendent, and I wonder when the school committee voted to do that. I also wanna say that out of these five steps, three of them are public meetings. There has not been a single solitary public meeting. When I go through this evaluation, first of all, I'm not sure that it is an actual formative evaluation. Definition of a formative evaluation is, let me just find which one that is. It's a process of gathering and analyzing feedback during the development or implementation of a program, project, or product. It identifies strengths and weaknesses and areas for improvement. If you look at the superintendent's evaluation, professional practice goal exceeded, student learning goal met, school improvement goal met, instructional leadership proficient in all areas. Where is the formative here? Where is, is this is the goal, this is where you're going to get there? Formative feedback, by definition, is assessment for learning include, oh, sorry, wrong spot. Information communicated to the person that, really? Really?
Yes, really.
Really?
Yeah.
So, one more time, we're going to break the law, but cut someone off next?
So, in response, Ms. French, and here's what I'll say, we know the evaluation tool very well. We're following the evaluation tool. So, yes, ma'am.
That page I gave you came right out of.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. So, so here's where we are, and I've stated this multiple times publicly at meetings, right? So, we made the decision as a committee, we talked about this around an executive session, how we were going to put the superintendent on a two-year evaluation plan. Reason being, we wanted to set the superintendent up so where he was putting in his goals in place.
What goals? This is supposed to be done in public meetings.
So, what document were you reading off of, Ms. French?
Excuse me?
What document were you just reading off of? The superintendent created goals, he has goals. If we haven't gotten that document to you, we will get it up.
When was it stated and gone over in public meetings?
Not sure that it was.
Okay. It says right on this page.
Okay.
One of the DESI documents.
Sure, feedback for moving forward, thank you for that. So, we're.
Feedback for going backwards. How?
Feedback for moving forward. We'll take that into consideration, we'll certainly do that moving forward. When the superintendent's crafting his goals, we'll make sure to state those publicly. Superintendent has goals. He's had goals throughout the entitlement of his tenure. We're tracking those goals. We're holding accountable to those goals. The formative assessment, we went through this rubric, we looked at the evidence that he's put in to the program at this point, we sat as a subcommittee, we given him very directed feedback, we've sat with him, we've given him the direct feedback. He understands, he's willing to work towards it. This year, we were hoping, and certainly hoping, to see growth when we sit down to do a summative. So, if, one, hand up, chair of the evaluation subcommittee, sorry we didn't go over his goals in public, he has goals. Hand up, sorry, if you don't think he should have been on a two-year plan, that was the committee's prerogative at the time. It was the committee's prerogative at the time. Committee's been getting feedback throughout, the superintendent's been getting feedback throughout his tenure here. He's going to continue.
Can I ask the committee, who on this committee has been getting feedback from the superintendent?
Feedback from superintendent, Ms. French?
The superintendent. That he's been giving you.
No, we've been giving him feedback. We're not getting feedback from him.
He's been telling you what's going on, reaching his goals, right?
We can have a conversation offline if you would like to talk around the evaluation.
I will only talk to him.
Well, great, that's fine, too. Moving on.
Ms. French, to, you know, to address the first portion of your, of your statement, I'm, I'm aware that Ms. Petty requested the superintendent's evaluation, sent it to me directly. I was trying to figure out whether or not, I knew it was the midpoint of a two-year evaluation, and I was sorting out whether or not that formative was a public document. When I found out it was, it coordinated to men the meeting time was, you know, and there were several people that spoke to it. That's why, you know, the following day after the meeting, I shared that evaluation with Ms. Petty and with, with other folks that had also requested at the same time, because I had it. But I, I definitely do not want you to think that it was.
So, what shared with, Deb, you do have it at this point?
It was shared with Carlos, and I'll copy all that.
Okay.
Actually, but I asked three times probably for that document.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I did ask him, I knew as well, and I didn't seem to get it until Carlos asked for it, and then it came.
Yeah, shame, shame on us, Deb, there's a lot of requests coming in from a lot of different people, right?
I'm sure you're tired of seeing me up here, and quite frankly, I'm tired of being up here. Let me go back to the beginning of when Mr. Strauss was first hired. I can remember my first meeting with him. It was a meet and greet. We all had meet and greets back then, if you remember. I remember what he asked me. His first question to me was, Sherri, what's your why? And I said, my why is really easy for me. My why is you always do the right thing. In fact, I have something in my kitchen, a big, it's been there for probably 25 years. It says, you'll never forget, you'll never regret doing the right thing. So, he seemed to like that. When it was my turn to ask him questions, I saw behind him, there was a whiteboard, we were in his office, by the way, and I said, I'm interested in that first thing on your whiteboard. Capital letters, E-B-A-L-S. Evalues. Underneath it said things like, and I'm not exactly sure, but nurses, paraprofessionals, secretaries. I said, tell me about that. And he told me that he felt that this district had done not a great job, I'm not gonna say poor, but not a great job on evaluations. And we talked a lot about that. I was happy with that, to tell you the truth, because I believe in evaluations. As a teacher, I evaluated my students four times a year, and then three times a year, every single year. The kids liked it, the students liked it, every teacher does that. Parents appreciate it. If you're a parent, you appreciate getting those progress reports, because it tells you a whole lot of good stuff, and it also tells you some things that need to be worked upon. And people who get evaluations and learn what they're doing very well at, and also what needs improvement, when they improve in that, they do very, very well, and they become, quite frankly, experts in their trade. So, everything was good. So, now, I sat two weeks ago, and Ms. Petty asked about the evaluation, and I came up and I said, I didn't know that you had evaluated, so I'd like a copy of that, and I was, I was given a copy of it, and I appreciate that. I have it here with me, I'm not gonna get into the bulk of it, but I am gonna look at just the last page. It was signed on June 23rd, 2023. I just want you to know that at eight and a half years, I resigned, eight days before this was signed. So, you can imagine my surprise, as I'm reading this date and thinking, are you kidding me? Did you do this behind my back? You can't do this kind of an evaluation in eight days. Each, each person has to do it? They need to put it all together? And so, I said, this seems, this seems suspect to me. So, I did a little bit of very simple, online minutes of the meeting, and I went through all of the minutes of the meeting from June 14th, the night that I resigned, up until present. On June 28th, when the subcommittee reported out, Mr. Sankewitz said of the subcommittee, um, Subcommittee Superintendent Committee, that, quote, "A meeting is scheduled for July." Two months later, on August 28th, again, when asked, quote, "We are scheduling a meeting with Mr. Strauss to review his evaluation." Again, that should have been done in public, that's general law.
Yep.
General law, 30A, sections 21 and 22. So, that was gonna be reviewed, his evaluation. In September, October, November, December, January, February, March, every time that this committee was asked for an update, there were no updates. Again, that seems suspect to me. Maybe it's just me. At the, at the April 3rd meeting, we were told, quote, "Evaluations are coming in, and this is an ongoing process," end quote. On May 8th, Mr. Sankewitz informed the committee in public session, quote, "Mr. Strauss is finishing up on his second year, and once the formative is written, it will be shared with the committee." The formative assessment was written in June of 2023.
Point of, point of order through the chair, June 23rd was when it was signed, and Ms. Barron, so.
Could I please finish?
Sure.
And you should be going through.
Please, Sherri, go ahead.
I'm gonna give you time to, but I don't understand any of this. As Mrs. French has already said, once again, we have broken open meeting laws. We did that when I was on the committee, we talked about it. Nothing's changed. In fact, quite frankly, I think it's got worse. I don't, I don't understand you folks. I worked with you for eight years, we never had any of these problems. Everything seems to be backdoor, fraud, collusion, whatever you wanna call it, but it certainly is not giving the public, the people who elected you, what they deserve. Thank you.
So, I'm just gonna respond to one thing you did say, that was signed on June 23rd. That formative assessment was on prior to that, that's when the signatures actually got on the paper, so there were conversations with the superintendent at that point. That document right there, Ms. Barron, and you were still on the committee, it, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee forwarded it out to the entire committee for feedback, right? Hey, here's where we're at, give us feedback, we wanna hear from you. Where does he, where, what's your feedback on each of the standards? Was sent out.
Well, that never happened, I'm sorry, not while I was on the committee, and it did not happen.
Okay. I sent it out. I can, I can dig, I can dig and find it. But, no, can I finish now?
Sure.
Thank you. Sent it out for feedback from the committee, crickets back from the committee as far as feedback go. Now, mind you, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, we were sitting with the superintendent all the time, we were going through the project, we were going through the process, we were sitting down, we were giving him the feedback. We sat down and went through that document right there that you're holding, and gave him some very pointed feedback around his first year in the district. With where we thought, huh?
When?
Prior to that being signed, I don't know the data off the top of my head, prior to that being signed. So, there's, there's no collusion. That was sent to the committee for feedback, we heard crickets back. You were on the committee at that time, Ms. Barron, so I'm sorry. I don't know, I don't know what else you want me to tell you. And I might as well hop into the superintendent evaluation subcommittee update at this point, given that we're on the topic. So, we are scheduling a couple of meetings to work on getting the summative done. The summative will be presented in a meeting, in a presentation to the community. Again, you wanna say we violated open meeting law, I was a chair at the time, hands up, again, I'll take it. We're working to evaluate the superintendent, we're working to give him feedback, and we're working through the product, through the process. So, best I can tell you.
You will all remember that I asked at three months in with this new superintendent if we could do an evaluation. I was snickered at, and one member said, oh, that's an insult, Sherri. Okay. I asked somewhere between six and seven months in, I was told, this is a different management style, Sherri, that you're not aware of. I never received one email. Yep, I'm done, Will, I get it, you want me down out of here, I get it. This is the reason why I resigned, because you dismissed me, or you didn't tell me what was going on.
Your feedback's been heard.
I wasn't on those emails.
Your feedback's been heard, thank you.
I wasn't on the emails.
Sent to the entire committee.
Sherri, thank you. Ms. Petty, go ahead.
Since we're on the subject of the evaluation, which I have been very curious and wanting to know about, for an entire year, I asked Gene Fox last year about the superintendent evaluation, mainly because my main concern is that I don't get communication from the superintendent. He just dismisses me, and I, and Freetown, and I wanted to bring that up as a point so that it could be improved upon. And I, I will say it has been improved, but I, I will say that Freetown still is like the redheaded stepchild, except when it's time to pay the invoices, then we're front and forward, and expected to be there to write the checks, which is fine. So, again, I've been asking almost every meeting when there's a public, hey, can you do something and get input from everybody for the evaluation? And I've been, yes, yes, that's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. It's probably been three months at least that I've been asking. I think my concern is, you know, we're on two years, he's going on his last year of his contract, and by the way, the contract I read requires an annual evaluation as well. Not your formative summative one, but an evaluation, and that's not been done. You can sit here and say it's been, but we know, I mean, he did his own, I mean, he does his own, say, yeah, I met all my goals. I, I don't, I don't find that to be a true evaluation, and it is over and done with, we're into, you know, we're done with two years now, but I have some really big concerns about, and I've, I've spoken to you, Will, about this, and we're going into the third year. Are we gonna renew his contract? I mean, we need to start thinking about that, and if we're not, we're gonna have to start thinking about that. I mean, clearly, he's looking for another job, or he wouldn't have had a, an interview in Hingham. So, he wants out, I don't, I don't know what the committee feels, I don't, I just think it's something that we can't wait, I think it needs to be done sooner than later. If he's gonna stay, he needs some corrective actions, I think, and some, some real true goals that maybe work with the communities better, and obviously, we got some issues with our budget and how we put that together. So, I just, I, I think that's my concern, and I've been, I started raising it three months ago, and it's becoming more of an urgent matter, because I think that we need to have some outlook, and maybe the committee does, because a lot seems to happen in executive session that is never brought to the forefront, and I, I, I don't, I'm not up here to really attack, Will, but you can't just keep violating it in open meeting law, say, yeah, I'm violating it left and right, but it's okay, 'cause I did it. Okay, you need to correct that. We, we're asking because we want to know, and we're not trying to circumvent the process, we're standing in front of you in public, on TV, and that's not always what we wanna do either, but we have to. So, I don't think that's okay. So, I just wanna reiterate that, I guess my main concern is the non-communication to me, and I've been dismissed and been told, well, you're, originally, you're just interim. Well, I was interim for two years. I'm not interim anymore. I've been here for three years. I'm not interim. Can you communicate with me? And I do think on some level, when I ask for things, I have to say to Carlos, can you ask the school committee for this? And then he gets it, and then forwards it to me. That, I feel like is so dismissive to me and disrespectful to me, and these are the things I kinda wanted to point out in private and, and within evaluation, but wasn't giving that opportunity, so I guess we do it in public.
And Ms. Petty, I, I never intended for that.
Okay.
I mean, I, I appreciate the honest feedback, and we've heard it now from several people about transparency and, and open meeting law, you know, and I am doing my best to, you know.
I do appreciate that.
Get it where it needs to be.
I appreciate that.
And I, I appreciate the feedback, and I think you're a valuable member of this team, and I do not ever want you to feel dismissed.
I appreciate that.
So, can I just respond to a couple quick things you said?
Yeah, absolutely.
Again, it's, I'm stealing things from the superintendent evaluation subcommittee update, so we are working on currently, paring down a survey that's gonna go out to staff, to the community, to town officials, as part of a data point for the evaluation, we're working on it, it takes time. And I just want. And I just want to clear, clarify something you just said, the superintendent doesn't make the determination about whether his goals are met or not, that actually falls on us, the committee, based off the evidence that, that he presents, so I just want to kind of clear that up.
Okay, can I ask who's on the subcommittee?
Yep, it's Jen, Steve Sylvia, I believe Bob, and, and myself.
And John, as chair.
As chair.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, there's nobody from, like, Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee for this year, I believe it's Jen, Bob, and Steve Sylvia.
I might not be on it.
You were on it as part of the formative?
I was off last year, maybe, yeah, maybe during the rework, I got taken off, but I'm still obviously actively participating, and the committee as a whole is going to actively participate, right? It's not something that's done in a silo and not shared with the entire committee, and it won't be, so. That's where we're at with that. But Deb, we heard your feedback, I 100% agree with you that Freetown certainly is not the redheaded stepchild, it shouldn't be treated that way. You and I have had those conversations, we certainly, absolutely will continue to work to make sure that any information is sent to Lakeville, is sent to Freetown. We've given that feedback, and if it's not happening now, that's certainly a concern. But I also want to be very careful that we're not feeding down a superintendent that's not here, right?
For sure.
And discussing it before, you know what I mean, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Thank you.
You know, I've had those conversations with him.
You have, yep, well, I 100% agree with you.
Amanda Cook, Lakeville. I just wanted to check in, I know Jen Burke had brought up last meeting, and I had emailed the committee as well regarding the nursing situation in the district, and I just wanted to follow up. I mean, I know obviously nothing's going to be solved in a day, but I know when you're talking about going through the budget and working on all those things, I just wanted to see if that's something that's being addressed. Don't know if you can respond to me or not, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I know the committee is aware of it.
Okay.
I thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Anyone else of public participation? All right, thank you, everybody. New business. We have a... Updated terms for the appendix C as part of the teacher contract. I will accept a motion to table that vote till the next time we meet, to allow the team to review it more thoroughly and compare it to the, compare it with the existing teacher contract.
Move to table. A second for further discussion.
Okay, is there any further discussion on it?
Yeah, just for context, for, for obviously the audience, this was some work that was negotiated as part of the last teacher contract, that a committee would be formed to run through and just clean up appendix C, which is, I know there's been a lot of talk around stipends, right? I want to be very, very clear that these stipends that are in appendix C are coaching positions, clubs, anything that goes outside of the normal course of teacher duties. They hadn't been looked at in a very long time, probably since 2012, and there was a lot of cleaning up that needed to be done. It was a collaborative effort between the negotiation subcommittee, the superintendent, the interim director of finance, and the teachers' union. It was a, there were great meetings to attend, very collaborative. What we were able to do is, is form some criteria for, for clubs being run, and, and for teachers that have the ability to accept stipends for running clubs. We kind of built in a review process for folks, and we also took a look at appendix C, we removed items that were outdated, we moved some groups from one tier to the next. Part of the reason why we're tabling it tonight is I don't think the committee's had the proper amount of time to, to review it and compare it against the old appendix C, so goal is to vote at the next meeting, but that's, that's the context.
All in favor to table this till our next meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Appendix C will be tabled until our next meeting. Subcommittee updates, Regional Finance Committee.
Regional Finance. We had a meeting, and we decided to come up with questions for the auditors. I also reached out to NASC, the Mass Association of School Committees, and Maspo, with Mass, something, something business.
School business.
School business. I know, I didn't write it down, sorry. To, for guidance, because I feel that this audit, I want to be totally transparent with everybody, and I will, of course, keep everybody updated as it goes, which doesn't mean everybody can email me separately to ask me questions, just saying. When, when need be, we will send out notice, probably during school committee meetings, to tell you what's going on and how everything's moving forward. And that's that.
Any discussion, any questions? Superintendent's Evaluation Committee, that's been spoken to.
Yeah, we have a meeting on July 1st, where we'll meet and continue to review evidence, continue to work on the summative. We need to finalize the survey that's going to go out to the community, the staff, make sure town officials are on that list as well, Deb. And obviously, when we have a summative, we'll sit down with the superintendent, we'll review that data with him, how he did, and then we'll obviously schedule a meeting in open session to review how he, how he ended up after the two-year period, so more to come there, but we have a meeting July 1st.
Wellness Health Committee.
Um, I'm still trying to find out about the nursing situation. Mrs. Burke sends an email to all of us, letting us know that the nurses are supposed to be, I don't know what's, it's no longer legally under Directive of Student Services, it's supposed to be for the school committee. So, they answer to the school committee, and we answer to them. But also, I still have concerns about not having enough nurses, and looking into, where can we get the money to hire another nurse? At least one more, and I believe that nurses should be entitled to take breaks. We don't have a nurse to allow them to take a lunch break. And also, in the email, Jen, I didn't read the whole 72 pages, I'm sorry, but I did see that training. And I'm not sure, they're supposed to be trained every three years, I don't know if that's on any type of schedule, you know. Well, I'm sorry, was I even supposed to say yes?
No, go ahead.
In regards to training for nurses, just to have you, Arvin, you have to have so many credits every two years per state of Massachusetts. For DSC reasons, we're the same contract as the teachers, so they're 150 PPs, we have to have the exact same things, we have to go by their rules. If you have a national certification, you have to also have an additional 75 credits every five years, we have to go through our own process. Two of our nurses are not currently professional status, so they haven't been here three years, two of us are, so our trainings are a little bit different. We do make sure that we have those trainings, whether the school provides them or not, we make sure we have them for our own licenses. In regards to lunches and stuff, well, our contract is the same as the teacher's contract, we don't, it's not being upheld, it needs to change in this contract. So, hopefully negotiations will go well, whoever we're dealing with, but I've emailed school committee in regards to a lot of things, and our policies and procedures are supposed to be reviled every two years. That's been brought up since 2018, and it still hasn't been done by school committee, so.
Thank you.
Now, is that something we have to do as a whole school committee, or is that something that we could do in wellness?
I think we could, it would go to the policy subcommittee.
Policy, okay.
So, one thing I was, to tag on to the health and wellness, considering all the feedback, because we've had feedback from the community and from staff about nursing, could we have the, you know, a representative from the nurses, maybe the lead nurse, come in and present to us the state of nursing, and what they're seeing, what their needs are? Because I know Crystal's taking in health and wellness, but it's something that I think all of us should hear and be interested in.
Yeah, okay.
Valid, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think through the, through the superintendent's office, you know, I could surely request that, you know, the school nurse presents something to the, you know, to the committee, to the, to the public. I can, I can take that on.
Well, now that the school nurses are no longer.
I just said no longer, I just gave you the directive.
No, 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 it's, it's because it's listed under Director of Student Services, the nursing, which is not legal, they're supposed to be under the school committee. So, that wording needs to be changed, and so, that was, that was that.
All right, thank you. Policy Subcommittee, Steve is not here, but I know, as a committee, we have not met. I don't, I don't have an update on that. Capital Committee, is that also Steve?
I don't think there are updates at this time.
Okay, no updates as well?
No.
Any additional business that may come before the meeting? Anyone at the table? Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:09. You're in motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion abstained. Thank you, everybody.